I'll call to order the meeting of Monday, June 11th. And if the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Archibald?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Here.
Councilmember Moller?
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Here.
Mayor Rapp?
Here. You have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of May 29th. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
We got a double one now. Mayor Protam Archibald will take. Councilmember Harris has a second. Is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as they were submitted. We have one change in the agenda. If the clerk would please read it into the record.
We are, the administration has asked that Resolution Number 10, dealing with the vacation of alley number 134, be removed from the agenda.
And it was on our consent, so it will no longer be part of the consent agenda. Presentations.
We have an introduction of Fire Chief Tom Koenig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the invitation to come here and introduce myself in person. And just to say that I look forward to working with Council, Administration, and the Fire Department to continue to provide the service that this community has come to expect.
Well, thank you. Is there anyone on Council who wishes to make any comments or ask any questions?
Quiet.
Quietness. Did you have something, Councilmember Harris?
I was just going to say, welcome from Dream City into the River City.
There you go. Well, I hope it all goes very smoothly. So, thank you for coming and introducing yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to public hearings.
The following public hearings are to hear comments on three code cases to determine whether they constitute a nuisance as defined by Chapter 10, Section 10-211, and Chapter 34, Section 34-3 of the Port Huron City Code. The first public hearing is for Code Case Number 12-009, located at 738 Bancroft Street. Following the public hearing, Council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Public hearing number one, before we open it up to the audience, if Ms. Harmer would please give us some details on this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. 738 Bancroft Street has been vacant for some time. And in fact, the 2010, 2011, and 2012-to-date taxes are past due. The water was shut off in April of 2011, and the homeowner passed away. The property itself is quite large. It's 115 feet of frontage by 125 feet. But unfortunately, the outbuilding is in disrepair as well as the main residence. We've had two different instances where we've had to go in and reattach the fence in order to secure the property. And as you can see, there'll be a considerable amount of cleanup as well as the demolition that they were asking for.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the public hearing on 738 Bancroft Street? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number one closed. Do we have a motion to?
So moved.
Thank you. Councilmember Moller, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole, discussion?
Mayor Rapp.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
Ms. Harmer?
Yes.
How long has the gentleman, wait a minute, gentleman been deceased and who is the property owner now?
I believe he has, he passed away about six to eight months ago. We have been in contact, there was no response to our notices, but the other day, we were in contact with a daughter who lives in Florida. She indicated to us that through probate, she was hoping that they would have done something with the property. They have not. They did attempt to get a land contract, which was not recorded, so it didn't show up, if there was one, on our title search. And she indicated to us over the telephone that she would be making no repairs and any cleanup efforts.
When you say the lot's 150 feet, so that's how many, how many buildable lots?
It's 115 by 180-something.
Oh, 115, okay.
So if we tried to split it the other way, if we were to in fact get the lot through a tax foreclosure, we may be able to get two buildable lots out of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor Rapp.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
Ms. Harmer, I'm assuming they're going to clean up all the junk in the yard too when they do the demo?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else? We will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rapp?
Yes. We'll move on to public hearing number two.
Is for Code Case Number 12-010, located at 2635 10th Avenue. Following the public hearing, Council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Go ahead.
Mayor and Council members, property on 10th Avenue has gone through a bankruptcy. We've contacted the previous owner. He's indicated that that is one of several that he held, and he is no longer going to take care of it. It has since that time suffered quite a bit of vandalism as well as obviously neglect. And I believe even that the pictures don't show really the true tale of a story. If you drive by today, we've had problems with individuals going out and stripping the exterior of the building, siding and so forth. We've performed two cleanups there this year and a number of grass cuts. And so we're anxious to move forward with this one as well. There is a water shut-off this past end of April with a rearage owed. There is, to this date, no taxes back due, but I assume at some point there will be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Council on this public hearing at 2635 10th Avenue? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number two closed and ask for a motion to proceed.
So moved.
Thank you. Councilmember Moller, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protam Archibald, is there a discussion?
Mayor Rapp.
Yes.
Who's the former owner? I mean, you got listed here the owner, so is that the former owner?
I'm sorry?
You have owner's name, Duckworth.
Yes.
Is that the former owner?
Yes, that is.
Okay, so the owners are the SFR?
Yes, that's a finance company. And the finance company has indicated to us that they probably will not, what we call, accept the asset, meaning that they will not receive title to it, which will keep the property in some state of limbo. So what we would hope for is, obviously, no one will pay the taxes and eventually that lot will at least come back to us.
How long has it been vacant?
April of 2012.
Just three months? Okay.
Any other questions? Take the vote.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rapp?
Yes. Move on to public hearing number three.
Is for Code Case Number 12-011, located at 1201 Mini Street. Following the public hearing, Council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Go ahead.
Mayor and Council members, 1201 Mini Street suffered a fire, and we were working for quite a bit of time, several months actually, with the property owners and their insurance company, waiting patiently for a settlement. We then exhausted our efforts and indicated to them that we would be proceeding with the demolition. We believe that the insurance company has actually settled with the previous property owners. And we will move forward with your permission with the demolition, but we will also then take action to file the appropriate suits so that we are reimbursed.
Thank you. Do we have, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to public hearing number three at 1201 Mini Street? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number three closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Councilmember Moller, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protam Archibald, is there discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
Kim, you answered my question, but I promised that I'd get the attorney on TV today because it's going in. So if I could have legal advice, isn't this, shouldn't the insurance company be paying for this? Or the landowner, if it was settled because of a fire?
Good evening, Council. Yes, Councilmember Moller, thanks for the invite. The, without looking at the policy, I don't know. But traditionally, yes, if they're issued an insurance check, and even if they're not issued an insurance check, under the ordinance, they're responsible. We've actually taken action on three or four to recover demo costs so far. Yes.
Further question, after we vote, and I assume it'll be unanimous again, can we file suit as soon as possible?
Yeah, under the ordinance, we have to send them an invoice after the demolition. I believe it's a 30-day period where if they haven't paid the invoice after the 30 days, we traditionally file suit within two or three days after that in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Rapp?
Yes.
We will move on to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the City Council, either on an agenda item or anything else, if they'll come to the podium and give us their name, now is the time to do so. And you do have four minutes.
Kathleen McCready, 4014 14th Street. Mayor and Council, I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Citizens for a Vibrant Community. I wanted, we wanted to thank the Mayor and Councilmember Moller for taking part in Art on the River, and specifically the Vietnam Veterans Moving Memorial Wall Ceremony. Also, the city, to thank the city staff for doing a great job with supportive service. The police and VIP, the, sorry, it got wet outside in the rain. The Fire Department for having the truck there to show the little children. It was a great event, and the CVC as a group can be proud of. I would also like to recognize the hard work of Trina Abadesian, Monam Curio, Barb Cox, Jason Sawyer, Angela Kelly, Paul Murray, and many, many more volunteers who gave up their time to ensure a great weekend for all in our community. In the end, our community was very well reflected, and the CVC is looking forward to planning for next year. Thank you. Thanks to everybody for the support.
You're welcome, and thank you for a successful event. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the Council? Mike, I know that you want to, so this is the time when you would do it.
Okay, I was going to defer till everybody.
Oh, okay, I didn't see anybody else get up, so.
Great.
And if you have that item you want me to pass down, I'll come and get it from you.
Oh, thank you. Actually, I have a couple items. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Michael Gino, and I live at 2028 St. Clair Street. We're the little red square in the convention center's drawing of their site plan. And our house is kind of right in the middle of that development. My wife would be here tonight, but she's ill, so I'm speaking for both of us. And I thank you all, first of all, for doing the jobs that you're doing. I know that these kind of offices are time-consuming and take a lot of attention, not only in meetings but behind the scenes. So I first want to thank you for your public service. Also want to thank you for giving me some time tonight to talk to you a little bit about the concerns that we have as homeowners living in a residentially-zoned property area. Now, for those who may not have access to the document that I brought in tonight or had shared with you, I wanted to use some of my time tonight to be available for any questions you might have about what I commented on there. There's been a lot of talk about what the Genos are doing or what they aren't doing, what's been done, what hasn't been done. We've been kind of keeping a low profile because it wasn't our interest to bring any harm or complications to the convention center project. We've been patient. We first heard about any of this back in September, which the background in my material I gave you talks about. There's been a number of processes that we want to be a part of but haven't been able to because of some communication difficulties. I think that what we are seeing, my wife and I as a pattern, is kind of unfortunate. Because it's sad to come before you and talk about something that's negative, but if it's there, I got to tell you. And that is that there's this pattern of people talking to us about what can be done or might be done concerning our interests in the property that we live on. But then when they meet with the developers and they get involved with their interests and everything, it changes. We don't hear anything. I don't know what you've been told about or what you've heard, meetings with us, but there has been no official meetings with us by anybody who's involved with the land itself since last year, the end of last year, December. And that was after a few meetings we had with the realtor. It's my intention tonight to inform you of our concern because if they go ahead with what they're doing, we stand to lose some of the primary value and enjoyment of our property in our neighborhood. There's a picture being passed around that gives you the vantage from one of our east windows of our home. That picture was taken just two days ago. And I understand that the friend that we had take that picture just happened to do it when a freighter was coming under. But you may wonder why two blind people would care about a view. As I explained in my information, we enjoy the view in a lot of ways that this development that Baker especially plans to do would disrupt. I'm asking tonight that, given the information that I've shared with you so far, that you send a message to the, to the parties involved who have up to now ignored us. We have not heard from Baker at all. We have not been entertained with any kind of counteroffer or any offer at all relative to our willingness to get out of the way of this, this development. My wife and I would find moving a difficulty. Shopping for another house would be a hardship. Learning a new location would be a hardship. But we want to accommodate the developer by opening the door for some kind of reasonable offer. And I'm going to tell you that there's been some figures thrown around about what we asked for.
Mike, if you could just let me interrupt for a moment. I did tell Mr. Gino that he had four minutes. He explained it might take a couple minutes longer, so if the Council has no objection, you can probably take another two or three minutes and then we'll have to, because we do have all this information here. But if that's...
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I sure do appreciate it, and I will respect that and finish up as soon as I can.
Okay.
The, the talk about what we, what we have asked for the property is based on a number of things. But one of them is, is what neighbor of ours who didn't have the vantage that we have got for their properties. So I've shared tonight with you a copy of the warranty deed that illustrates what a property near us is worth. So, you know, if you're wondering what property sold for there, we're not that far out of the ballpark. But we haven't had a counteroffer at all relative to what we, what we're asking. We would be willing to move if a reasonable offer would have been made. It hasn't. If we are going to stay there, we have concerns. And I've outlined those for you. There are more concerns than what I've outlined for you. But I wanted to just take a couple, just a couple of seconds to see what you have so far. Did you, did you have any questions I might respond to?
This is a little out of the ordinary, but does anyone have any questions for Mr. Gino while he's here? Seeing as we have removed the one item, as you heard earlier, from the agenda.
I do thank you for that.
And the other item is on just for its first and second reading this evening. And it's my understanding that Mr. Brown is going to meet with all of the parties. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So he should have some, some sort of discussion to have with you in the next two weeks prior to our next meeting. I don't know if anybody else on Council has anything in the interim that they want to ask.
Mayor Rapp?
Yes, Councilmember Cole.
I'd just like to clarify, has there been an official appraisal of the property?
No, there hasn't. And one of the reasons why is because appraisal won't reflect the value of our location. They'll just appraise the structure.
Okay.
That's a good question.
I don't think that there's anyone else that has anything right now, but certainly we have your communication as I'm sure everyone will read. And I believe that, I know that you're available by telephone, so we can get in touch with you if we wish to ask you any further questions. And Mr. Brown will get back with you.
Will there be an opportunity for another public audience before the revisiting of the rezoning? Or is that...
It would be on the next Council agenda in two weeks. And it would be another opportunity, yes, for public comment.
All I'm going to finish up with then is to say to you that we hope the circumstances that I've described to you change and improve where we're concerned and that we're considered. If they're not, I'm going to ask and urge that you not support that until they are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the City Council this evening? Seeing no one, I'll declare public comment. Part of the agenda closed, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mayor Rapp.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
Remove Resolution Number Three, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole will take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rapp?
Yes.
The items on the consent agenda, authorize a levy of the operating tax rate for the Blue Water Area Transportation Commission for the fiscal year beginning July 1st. It says 2013, about 12, doesn't it? Yes, okay. Just so everybody can correct that, it is 12. Scheduled a public hearing for June 25th, or two public hearings, on the maintenance cost for Huron Avenue streetscape and the Military Street streetscape projects. And also the declaration of the, in preparation of special assessment role in both matters. Reappointed Walt Crosby Jr., Robert Nelson, and Richard Welser to the Construction Board of Appeals, terms to expire June 30th of 2015. Confirmed and declared single-lot special assessments in the total amount of $4,598.15 for sidewalk replacement. Vacated that portion of Wells Street bound by Varney, Wells, 11th and 10th Streets without the reservation of full with public utility easement. And now we will go to, from the City Manager, Number One.
It's a recommendation that the budget for the 2011-2012 fiscal year be amended.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Archibald, is there a second? Councilmember Lewandowski, is there discussion?
Mayor Rapp?
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I'm guessing what that is, Mr. Brennan?
That would be correct.
The full 360,000 of the revenue sharing increase, is that going towards paying for police officers?
Yes.
The money that was found in the budget?
Well, I wouldn't say police officers, but police activity. It's for the current fiscal year. We haven't hired the new officers yet.
Okay. The money, I guess, is it for the new officers or is it for existing activities? Is, I guess, where I'm trying to figure out.
It's for activities this year because of the, the way that the, the budget, the police activity was this year with the warmer-than-normal winter. Their, their budget is expected to exceed, be a little over this year, so that's going to help absorb that overage.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Brennan?
Mayor Rapp? I guess the only, the problem I had was the fact that, number one, we just got done with budget discussions, and now we're moving in a direction where we have more money to spend. I agree, where it's going is in the right place. But I think that Council should have the opportunity to discuss this during the budget process.
Sir, this is for the budget that's just ending at the end of this month.
But it's going towards the new, no?
No, I don't believe that's the way it goes. No, you're talking, talking about balancing it out for the year, correct?
Yes, we are.
Oh, it's just to balance it, it's not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Thank you. If there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rapp?
Yes.
Recommendation Number Two.
It's a recommendation that the bid of S.A. Torrello Trucking in the amount of $7,050 for 1,500 cubic yards of Class II sand be approved.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there questions, discussion?
Mayor Rapp?
Yes.
What's the sand for?
That's just what I was going to ask. Beat me to it.
Mayor Rapp and Councilmembers, the, the sand is for backfill around water mains and sanitary sewers we make repairs for. We usually acquire sand twice a year. It's a Class II fill sand, which is a compactable sand. And this bid is significantly below the number that we budgeted for. This is our second purchase. This is our second purchase. Our budget for this purchase was $9,525, so we were able to get the sand for less than we anticipated.
Any other questions for Mr. Clegg? Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moeller.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
We'll move on to recommendation number three.
It's a recommendation that the bid of Sanctum Contracting in the amount of $18,941 for repair of the steps at the Port Huron Carnegie Museum be accepted.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Cole.
I'm curious if Mr. Clegg could explain the two different materials we're seeing on the bid.
Councilmember, or Mayor Rep and council members, what we have here is the existing steps at the museum were made of an Indiana limestone. And what we attempted to do is to look at the cost to replace the steps in kind, and then replace them in some other matter, manner. As we all know, we're trying to reduce the cost of doing work, so we bid it both ways so we could let council know what the cost would be in both instances. What we found as somewhat what we expected is that we can replace the steps in concrete at a much lower cost. What we have asked the contractor to do, and it's included in the bid, is to take a section of the limestone step and make a seat out of it, or a little bench. That will be left on-site for public use and viewing, but the steps themselves would be repaired in concrete.
Any other questions for Mr. Clegg? Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
Is it a total demolition and rebuild?
Yes. The current steps, as you may have noticed, are in significant disrepair, and we can't let, allow the public to use them on a regular basis. So what this would do is this would reduce the city's liability and give us, be able to reopen that entrance of the library for regular use.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
Two quick questions. Have we sanctum before? They're significantly lower than the next bid. Do we have any reasons to be concerned?
We spoke to the contractor specifically about that. He has assured us that he can do it for that price, because we told him there wouldn't be extras.
Second question was, and I'm sure you've done this, but do we have any reasons to be worried about historic preservation or ripping off the limestone and replacing it with concrete?
I can't answer that question tonight. It is my understanding that Ms. Harmer is going to be speaking to the Historic Commission tomorrow night about this material, unfortunately. They didn't have a Historic Commission meeting prior to the council meeting, but we wanted to bring this forward so we could get the work done as soonly, as soon as possible. We're trying to accomplish it before the end of this fiscal year, if we can.
So does that mean if, excuse me, if for some reason it doesn't meet those standards, you'd come back to us for potentially using the limestone?
I certainly wouldn't do anything else, other than what you authorized us to do. That is for sure. Yep, I can assure council of that.
Any other questions for? Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I guess my one last question is, is with the entrance and the gift shop in the place where they are, is this going to be an asset to the library? I mean, as far as safety is, but normally they're using the side entrance where they have the gift shop and their attendance fee, and with the front portion open, it's going to affect that.
Well, I wish I could respond to that question, but that is an operational question of the library. And while we are responsible for maintenance of the structure, we're not responsible for its operation. So I would have to bow to someone with more knowledge of its operation to answer your question, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I think that they are enthusiastic to get this resolved and have those steps replaced because it's rather unsightly with the caution tape around it, and so I think it's something that they definitely do want.
I've had several requests from time to time about it.
Any other discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moeller.
I guess my concern is, are we still thinking about getting rid of this building and giving it to them, or selling it to them for a dollar? I mean, I heard discussion about it one time, so are we going to put non-historical stuff into an historical building and then end up giving it away anyway for a dollar? Or what's, I mean, we've talked about this for ages, to let them have that building, so what's the long-term or short-term game plan here?
I don't know if, that I can, that I have an answer for disposition of the building. Certainly council would make that decision ultimately. The challenge we have is, since it's currently in our possession, we're just trying to address the issue.
Maybe Mr. Brown has something to say on that.
Well, it's a building that we don't have a lot of takers for. It's, it needs a substantial amount of work, and what we're, what we're trying to accomplish here is, it looks like it's in very bad condition, which it is in very bad condition, but we don't think that the primary public museum for the community looks like an asset looking like it does. And for $18,000, we can fix that problem and restore the building to some semblance of original beauty. It's not going to be original beauty, but it'll get the job done. And we've had many, many discussions with the museum about another building, but the question always comes up, what's going to happen to that building? And frankly, it needs probably a million dollars' worth of improvements in order to make it even attractive to give away for a dollar. So it's a stopgap measure. Probably in the long run, it'd be $18,000 that we'll throw away on this building. But it's part of our historical fabric, and it ought to look like we want this community to look.
I think you answered my question. We're throwing $19,000 away on a building that's worthless, so I won't support it. Thanks.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
How old is that building? I'm not even sure what year it was built.
Oh, I have a list of buildings' ages. I believe it's nineteen, it's in the early 1900s. But I don't have the exact date.
I think it was 1921.
But we will be providing a council a list of all our structures and the date, or approximate date of their construction per council's request. We're assembling that data right now. So you'll soon have that information.
Yes, Councilmember.
We've cited appearance, we've cited some liability issues. Is there anything that you're aware of that's going to be just around the corner that needs immediate?
Well, there's a great deal of concern about the roof structure. We've been patching the roof for a number of years, and we've been keeping a close eye on it. But as I've said to council before, to many councils, is that I'm always concerned with roofs. Once they leak on a regular basis, then you can end up with more structural damage, similar to some of the photos we see about dilapidated buildings. So it's something we have to keep an eye on, and we have, but eventually, we're going to have to deal with the roof.
What's the degree of your concern about that roof and safety?
Well, I don't have a safety concern at this time.
Okay.
But, and so I want to express that. I do not have a safety concern. My concern is that if it begins to leak, or if we're unsuccessful at keeping up with patches, someday, we're going to have to face the fact that we need to replace the roof, or we're going to risk significant damage to the structure of the roof. And that is a very expensive proposition to replace a roof in that building.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moeller.
Is Jim Fisher on the Historical Committee?
No. Don't believe so. Is that correct? No, he's not. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
You're welcome.
I guess I would just say that I think that we need to take care of this, because I don't think that even if we offered to give the building to the museum, that they would want to take it with all of the added expenses that they would have to do. If anything else, they would move out of it, which would leave us with a vacant building that we still have to maintain. And, you know, as we're going through code cases and different things, you know, we have to be as good as what we're asking other people to do, and it's very unsightly, and it's falling apart, and it's had caution tape around it for quite some time now. And I think that we owe that to the residents in that area to make it look nice and, you know, clean up our own backyard, so to speak. And with that, if there's no further discussion, I will move for a vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moeller.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
We'll move on to Resolutions. Number one.
Number one is authorizing 19 payments.
Do we have a motion?
Mayor Rep. I move we pay our bills.
You've been wanting to say that, right? Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole. Discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moeller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Resolution number three.
Rescheduling the regular meeting of July 23rd, 2012, to August 13th, 2012, and rescheduling the regular meeting of August 27th, 2012, to September 10th, 2012.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz. Is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moeller.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
We'll move on to Resolution number four.
Is approving the contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the reconstruction work along Sanborn Avenue from 12th Avenue to 10th Avenue.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there discussion? I just wonder, Bob, you would like to at least tell us a little about this project, when it's going to start, time it's going to take, et cetera?
Mayor Rep and council members, the project is intended to be bid by the Michigan Department of Transportation, and bid openings are scheduled for July 6th. What usually occurs is that it takes approximately six weeks for the Michigan Department of Transportation to award the contract after the letting. That would place this probably in the middle of August. My expectation is that it will begin mid to late August, and it is our intention it'll be completed before the end of this construction season. It's not a long project, but we have a significant storm sewer to put down in the middle of the road, some sanitary sewer repairs, and water main to replace. So that will take some time before we can get to the final paving of the road. It is our intention to put the road back essentially exactly where it is today.
Any questions for Mr. Clegg? I guess not, thank you. Any discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moeller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
You know, before we move on to ordinances, I just want to ask Mr. Clegg, speaking of construction where we're here, it's a lot of order, but how is the Water Street construction coming? It just happened to hit me right then, I thought I'll forget by the end of the meeting, otherwise.
Mayor Rep and council members, the project, on the initial days, one or two days into the project, we had a lot of concern about traffic control. Our staff worked closely with the contractor, our street staff were out there, and the police department also provided assistance. And by Thursday, we started on a Tuesday, by Thursday, the calls and concerns about traffic control had subsided. We continue, of course, to work with the project. The project is progressing as the contractor had predicted thus far. We did encounter an obstacle that he has to get the water main around that was buried in the ground that no one knew about, wasn't in any of our records. So they're working on that. But other than that, it's progressing well, and we're speaking with the contractor to see if the late start is going to cause them any problems at the back end of the project. We're speaking back and forth with them about that. If it appears that's going to be the case, we'll be contacting our friends with M.D. to see how they can assist us if there'll be any additional costs.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Bob, for that?
No.
Thanks. We'll move on to ordinances. Number one.
Is being given its first reading and is an ordinance to amend Chapter 46, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 4, Empowerment of Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Port Huron, for the purpose of amending the number of unpaid parking tickets before a vehicle can be impounded to coincide with state law.
Is there a motion to give this?
So moved.
Thank you. Councilmember Moeller, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski. Discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I guess this is kind of for the police chief. I just wanted to know that Michigan is talking right now about revising their laws on parking tickets, and I just wondered if this is any more lenient or more supportive of the state
I'm aware that they are going to amend the traffic laws in regards to parking citations. I believe this is a change from six unpaid to three unpaid.
Correct.
Is basically just what we're talking about, which, you know, I think is pretty consistent and should be, you know, not an issue with anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Moeller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Ordinance number two.
Is being given its first reading and is an ordinance to amend Chapter 16, Community Development, Article 3, Downtown Development Authority, Division 1, Generally, Section 16-82, Powers, Duties, and Boundaries of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Port Huron, for the purpose of adding property to the boundaries.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second? Did you speak at the same time? Yeah, Councilmember Lewandowski is the second. This is to add the old Victorian inn, correct?
Correct.
Discussion, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moeller.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Number three.
Is an ordinance being given its first reading and is an ordinance to amend Chapter 52, Zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Port Huron, for the purpose of updating the chapter.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole. I wonder, before we entertain discussion, if maybe Ms. Harmer could explain to us what brought about these changes and some of the major changes in the ordinance?
Good evening, young mayor and council members. The zoning ordinance amendments, Planning Commission met last week and went through the, some of these we've been kind of hanging on to for the last several months. To give you some of the highlights, there was a memo attached there, I'll just briefly go through that. Boarding houses, that they, we had a request to remove those from the A1 districts. Buffer strips, we now have on our ordinance a buffer strip, the height is required for four feet, but we've liked to include an increase to five feet. What we've found is, in some cases, depending on the elevations with the larger vehicles, headlights, and some complaints that we've had in the neighbors, we'd like to create a better buffer, if you will, between conflicting zones. Hotels, we've updated that definition. We found that we really didn't have a definition for a hotel, and that versus some of the other uses as far as boarding houses. We also increased the distance from 300 feet to 1,500 feet between transitional housing facilities, rehabilitation facilities, and that coincides with what we currently have for foster care homes as well, and shelters. We also corrected the typographical air and probation and parole facilities, but then also for probation and parole offices and rehabilitation offices. We clarified that those are for professional counseling services during normal business hours, and not to be confused with clubhouses or recreation centers. Also, we have taken transitional housing and homeless shelters from the A1 zone, which was supposed to have been at the last rendering of the zoning ordinance, it was a typo error, and really, they should be in the M1 and M2 zone. We've also included clubhouses, lodges, accredited universities, related facilities, retail offices in a C1 zone district, rather than just CBD districts. And we've included the language that stipulates that City Council can adopt the application fees for alleys, streets, and easement agreements that was not indicated in the ordinance before, and yet, those fees had been set for a number of years by the department, where there was no resolution to follow through with those. We've also changed the requirements for the Planning Com- excuse me, Planning Commission to give final approval on special use permits.
Is there any questions for Ms. Harmer?
Just one question. Is the only place where council doesn't have a say is under the special use permits? Because I was glancing through this, and it says, normally it would say after the City Council. The City Council shall make after recommendation, and it's lined out the City Council. Is that just for special uses?
That would be correct, just for special use permits. And really, the reasoning behind that was certainly not to take away any authority that you may have. Ultimately, any appeals or decisions that the applicant does not agree with would come back to City Council for final disposition, but it does shorten the timeframe a bit, and our special use permits are typically for things such as daycareers for six or less children in a residential zone. The Planning Commission has the public hearing, gets the input from the citizens, makes a recommendation, and most, I don't say most, many communities then issue the Planning Commission's the authority to do the special permit. And if there's a dispute, if there's a reason why they want to appeal that decision, they can come to City Council and then have another hearing, as they always can.
Thank you.
I see here it says it's allowed by Michigan law.
Yes, it is.
To do that.
Correct.
Did you have a question, Councilmember Cole?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. As far as the buffer strips, does that then become retroactive?
No, unfortunately, we are not allowed to go retroactive.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't think so, I just wanted to make sure.
But certainly, I'm sorry, if I may interject, though.
Sure.
In the case where they have a fence or a masonry wall, and they go to replace that, they would have to replace it with the five-foot.
Okay. And then, increasing the distance, does that affect any current facilities?
No, it does not.
Okay, so we don't have any within that 1,500 feet currently?
No.
Is that it?
Yes, that's it, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you. If there's no other discussion, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Muller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.